Okay, we are all here. I would like to call our regular meeting to order and announce that the board did meet in closed session and no action was taken. I would also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. And I'd also like to announce that there are cards available at the table just outside of the boardroom for anyone who wishes to address the board. If you wish to address the board, complete a card and hand it to the staff member to the table to my right. Please be sure to complete the card indicating whether the matter you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when it comes time to address that agenda item and will hold your card until that time. And before I begin the pledge, I would like to welcome our newest team member here, Ms. Nancy Chires Espinosa. And I'd also like to call on Mrs. Anna Corabi, parent volunteer at Anna Kirchgater Elementary School who will lead in the pledge. Mr. Tony Perez will assist in the recognition.
May I also have Principal Larry Quazmando, Principal and Vincent come up to the podium, please. Okay, here we go. Okay, we are pleased to introduce and have representing Anna Kirchgater Elementary School in leading the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Anna Corabi. Ms. Corabi is the current PTC Board President and an active member of our school site council. She has two sons, Vincent, who promoted from Anna Kirchgater last year and is currently attending Rudder, and Yelando, who is current sixth grader at our school. Ms. Corabi is a constant presence at Anna Kirchgater and our biggest parent cheerleader. Ms. Corabi never hesitates when we ask for her support. She attends the superintendent's parent advisory committee and is a parent's voice on our regional board presentations. Ms. Corabi has been a member on our parent teacher club for the past five years. This year, she had the dubious honor of being our elected PTC president. She has taken on this responsibility with open arms and recently organized our school highly successful harvest fair and our PTC movies nights. These have been wonderful events for our school and great opportunities to bring together students, their family, and the community. And is a true Kirchgater hero. We are proud to have such an outstanding community member as part of the Kirchgater family. Parents like Ms. Corabi are a huge reason why our parents feel they have a recognized voice in their children's education. Thank you, Ms. Corabi, for your dedication to Anna Kirchgater Elementary School and the many years of services you have given to the students and staff at our schools. We are proud to honor you tonight and to celebrate our leading tonight's board meeting in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Arlene is getting it. We have a wonderful consolation thank you prize on behalf of the Elk Grove Citizen and our district. Mr. Perez is on his way down, okay. This is a great parent volunteer here, gets right in. She's helping things, I love it. How about another round of applause for Mrs. Corabi? Would you like to say anything, ma'am? You don't, it's up to you.
Okay, just like this. I'd like to thank everybody for electing me. It's truly an honor to be a part of the Elk Grove School District. I started out as a yard duty supervisor and I had some ups and downs and my child right here told me, "Why don't you, you know, start volunteering at the school, you know, do something for the kids?" And I said, "Okay," and four years down the road, now I'm the PTC president and I am also at the school site council for James Rudder. I feel like I'm part of a family. I don't just feel like a parent at these meetings, at these functions. I honestly feel like this is one of the best school districts that I've ever been involved with, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you so much. Terrific. Thank you. All right, next we have our presentations, our high school student representatives. I will first call on Kasumnas Oaks.
Good evening, President Madison, members of the board, and Superintendent Hoffman. My name is Brooke McNeil.
And my name is Bailey Coben, and it is our pleasure to be here tonight reporting to you as Kasumnas Oaks High School's board representatives for the third time so far this school year. Wolfpack Theater's Fall Play, Servant of Two Masters, was a huge hit. This intricate performance made the audience laugh with all of its ironic twists and turns. The Kasumnas Oaks Spring Musical, Beauty and the Beast, will begin rehearsals in the upcoming weeks. Performance dates are in late April. Moving from theater to sports, our athletic teams are in their first year of competing in the more competitive Capital Valley Conference, which includes Whitney, Ponderosa, Roseville, Oakmont, Antelope, Bella Vista, and Del Campo High Schools. Women's basketball is currently in fourth place, fighting for the league's last playoff spot. Our wrestling team has had a lot of successes competing in wrestling tournaments throughout the winter. Men's basketball is currently ranked number 10 by the Sacramento Bee, are currently in first place in the Capital Valley Conference. Our amazing winter athletes have done a great job putting in extra work to compete in the higher athletic division. We look forward to our spring sports starting next week. In December, we had our annual National Honor Society induction. Thirty-six sophomores and juniors were admitted into NHS. January 26th through 30th was CO's Winter Homecoming Week. Students dress up for the spirit days, which included Opposite Day, the Letter C Day, Injury Day, Periodic Table of Elements Day, and on Friday, upperclassmen dressed in orange while lowerclassmen dressed in blue. Students were very creative on C Day, dressing up as cows, cowgirls, and even condiments. On Friday, we had our Winter Homecoming Rally and Home Basketball Game against Oakmont. Those events kicked off the Sadie Hawkins Dance, which was on Saturday night. The rally consisted of guest performances from Cheer, Polly Club, and Desi Club. It also included a lot of fun games and class chants. Winter Homecoming royalty was recognized and the senior king and queen were crowned. On Saturday, we had our Fire and Ice themed dance, where students dressed in either cool colors like blue and white to represent ice, or red and orange colors to represent fire. At the dance, parent volunteers helped work a dance cafe where snacks could be purchased to help raise money for the upcoming Sober Grad Night and gave students a place to relax when not on the dance floor.
CUHS is having a lot of activities happening in the next two months. On February 11th, we are having our Second Unity Day this year. Students will once again connect with each other through icebreakers and games. On February 12th, Kasumnas Oaks National Honor Society, with the help of Blood Source, will be hosting a blood drive. NHS is encouraging all eligible students and staff to donate blood. Junior prom and senior ball are also just around the corner. Junior prom will be on March 7th at the Grand Island Mansion. Senior ball will be on April 18th at the Galleria Library in Sacramento. Our juniors and seniors are eagerly waiting for these special nights, and leadership students are working extremely hard to make sure that these events will be a night to remember. Also in February is our Battle of the Sexes Week, where we will have a fun and friendly competition to prove which gender reigns supreme. We will also hold many friendly games, dress-up days, and an explosive rally in the end of the week to determine who wins as the most spirited. It is always one of our best spirit weeks. That is a look at what happened at Kasumnas Oaks recently, and we look forward to presenting to you again on April 21st, 2015.
Thank you, excellent report. Great things happening at Kasumnas Oaks High School. And next, I will call up on Sheldon High School.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, fellow board members, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. My name is Cal Giottwall, and I am the AIC president at Sheldon High.
My name is Brian Moran, I'm ASB Vice President.
On November 12th, we hosted our very own car show. The car show was for Sheldon students who have an interest in showcasing their cars on campus during lunch, and the student body was able to vote for the best in each category. The winners received a gift card for Amazon. On December 17th, in Sheldon's PAC, our dance program hosted their semi-annual recital. Sheldon students that were enrolled in dance classes participated in various dances choreographed by Deborah Roberts and Becky Hopgood. We are very proud of what they learned throughout the courses. The freshman class council helped organize Sheldon's annual Giving Tree. The Giving Tree is a program that helps Sacramento Children's Home collect gifts for the holidays. Students and staff had the opportunity to choose a star off the tree and bring as many gifts as they wanted. We are very fortunate to have a chance to give back to our amazing community during the holidays. The Biotech Academy and Science Department of Sheldon is pleased to announce that one of our very own Ryan Fong was named one of 300 semifinalists in the Intel Science Talent Search 2015. Chosen from more than 1,800 entrants, Ryan wins a $1,000 award with an additional $1,000 going to Sheldon High. It is a huge honor to say he is Sheldon's first to achieve this award. Sheldon's men's basketball team has been traveling the United States. We have competed against high schools in Colorado, Utah, and all over California. Yesterday, we defeated Franklin High with a score of 54 to 48, sending us to first in the league. We are looking forward to host our next home game against our cross-town rivals Pleasant Grove on February 13th. Sheldon's women's basketball team traveled to Grant High and defeated them with a final score of 64 to 54. On January 20th, the Lady Huskies played against McNair and won with a score of 54 to 34.
In wrestling, Ethan Bleuer placed in the toughest Delta League tournament. The Sheldon High School's wrestling team has an away conference meet at Davis tonight. We are very proud of all our winter sports. Also, we are pleased to announce Darius Mahone played in the SAC B Optimus All-Star Game. On January 23rd, we are starting our annual winter homecoming activities with a jaw-dropping balloon drop at the rally. Next week, we continued our activities with the Fun Spirit Week and a nail-biting homecoming game against Monterey Trails. And lastly, the homecoming dance. In the upcoming events, Sheldon gets to recognize all our amazing students who stay on top of their studies with Renaissance Barbecue, which will take place this Friday. On February 23rd, we will be having our spring academic awards in our main gym. It starts at 6:00 and we'll be awarding all our students with a cumulative GPA of 3.75 or more. We would like to invite our fellow board members in the celebration of our students who has achieved academic excellence. As the end of year approaches, the excitement is increasing. We would personally like to invite you, as well as the community, to come and support our Universal Rhythm Dance Company in their annual main stage, which will be held Saturday at 7:00 in the Sheldon's PAC. It's only $10 at the door. This show will be filled with performances choreographed by special guests and as well as Sheldon's students. Also, they will be also having a surprise performance by accommodating high schools. We would love to see you there.
On March 11th at 6:00 PM, Sheldon will be holding a cyberbullying internet safety seminar. This will include an officer and other additional speakers presenting speeches about internet safety. We would like to invite the whole community as well as the fellow board members. Please promote this event to keep our community a safe and positive environment. Hope to see you there. On an ending note, we would like to thank you all for your valuable time and hope you have a great rest of this Tuesday evening.
Excellent report, thank you. And next, I would like to call up on Rio Casadere High School.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the school board, and Superintendent Hoffman. My name is Paul Van, Dejanae Reed, and I are going to let you know about the programs, events, and activities that are happening at Rio Casadere High School. Most of the students who attend Rio Casadere came to help themselves make up credit so that they can graduate. The teachers respect and support the students to help them achieve their dreams and goals. They use opportunities like award ceremonies and weekly compliment lists to recognize and motivate students who are doing well. This school has helped me, and now I'm on track to graduate this spring. In keeping with the focus on college and careers at Rio Casadere High School, we will be offering a college and career fair during school on March 13th. There will be representatives from various colleges, training programs, and different career fields. One of the most popular things at the fair is the Rio Alumni Panel, where they talk about what life is like after high school and what they needed to do to prepare for their current careers. It is great to hear from former Rio students who have been here before and what they had to do to get where they are at now. One of the programs offered at Rio Casadere is drug, alcohol, and tobacco counseling for students who want help or just to learn more about the subject and to make positive choices. The students in the program learn about the impact that their decisions can have on their lives, and they learn effective skills for stress management. This program is offered through Project Success in a partnership with a community-based organization and is supported by a grant. When students first come to Rio, they're surprised to hear other students say that they want to go to Saturday School. Although we call it Saturday School, it isn't like what it might be at other schools. At least once a month, Rio Casadere provides a special tutoring opportunity for students on Saturday. This is not a punishment, but a choice for students to get extra credit and to get help. Refreshments are served and students are also able to make up for previous absences. One new opportunity for students this year is the beginning of the Rio Casadere Homework Club. It is open every day at lunchtime for students to get help with homework and earn credit. There are computers available and a teacher to help out. We think that one of the best ways to help students is to have new experiences. This year, we have had two field trips to the Crocker Art Museum. One was for the special African-American art exhibit, and the other was to see two exhibits on Mexican and Latino artists. Later this spring, we are planning another trip to the Crocker. We also took a field trip to the San Francisco Shakespeare Festival to see the taming of the shoes at a park. It was great and a first-time experience for many of the students on the trip. Rio Casadere has a trip planned in March to go to a special show of the Chinese protest artist Ai Weiwei at Alcatraz. Ai Weiwei was not free to leave China, so he had to design the exhibit without ever seeing it. It should be very interesting to see the present and to see the art. Now Dejanae will tell you some more about what is happening at Rio Casadere High School this year.
Good evening. My name is Dejanae Reed. I am a senior at Rio Casadere High School, and I am the Vice President of Leadership. I also caught up on my credits as well, and I'm going to graduate this spring. Student leadership includes representatives from every advisory class at Rio Casadere and it meets every Monday. We are currently planning a Valentine's Gram to raise money for our prom. Rio Casadere High School hosts a prom that is open to students from other alternative schools in Elk Grove Unified School District. This year, the prom will be held on April 17th, and the theme is Always and Forever. Since we come from different schools, we do some activities in student leadership to get to know each other so that we can all work together. This fall, we had a spirit week with challenges between classes to decorate doors, and we had theme days where students dressed up to match the theme. Students from Rio Casadere also attended the Friday Night Live Leadership Experience to help us. As a result, we have become more focused and open-minded about things we do. We also are involved in activities to give back to our community. We sponsored a penny drive to raise money for Leukemia Society. This year, the penny drive will begin February 23rd. We do it as a contest between contract classes to increase participation. We also sponsor a kids canned food drive to gather food to donate to our community. And we have been participating in the Teens for Genes Donation Drive. Last summer, the Mack Road Partnership sponsored summer nightlights, and several Rio Casadere students volunteered to help. I really like being involved in student leadership. It gives us a chance to make a difference in our community. Rio Casadere wants to encourage all of its students to be able to prepare for careers after high school and to have access to colleges and other training programs. The counselor is planning some field trips to local colleges so that students can experience what the campuses are like, to learn what they need to do to go there. Since most of those options cost money, the counselor is offering several opportunities for students to learn about scholarships and financial aid. We had a scholarship workshop that focuses on opportunities provided by Elk Grove Foundation Scholarships, and we have a financial aid workshop scheduled. The counselors also meet individually with students and parents to guide them through the process. Rio Casadere offered the ASBAB on January 29th. The ASBAB is the Armed Service Vocational Aptitude Battery, and it was open for all students, whether they were considering a career in the military or not. The ASBAB helps students develop a better sense of which career fields would be best fit for them. Rio Casadere also offers career technical education classes for students to take to prepare them for a future career. Two classes in the medical field are offered on our campus, and computer graphics class offered next door at Lost Forest High School is also a popular choice for Rio students. There are so many opportunities at Rio. Thank you for letting us share this with you today.
Thank you. Excellent reports from our high school student representatives. Want to recognize any of our principals that are here. Patrick McDougall from Kasumnas Oaks, I don't see him. Paula Duncan, we do, he, oh, right. Assistant, and then we do have Doug Wendell here, principal for Rio Casadere. Thank you. All right, students, you may be dismissed. All right, next, we have a request for student expulsion. I would like to ask if anyone wishes to address the board in closed session regarding a student expulsion recommendation. Seeing none, I would like to call for a motion to approve the request for student expulsion. We have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to announce that action item number seven and seven A are being moved forward on the agenda and will now be addressed. Item number seven, resolution to support placing a new state bond on the 2016 ballot. I'd like to call in Mr. Rob Pierce.
Thank you, members of the board, President Singh Allen, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. This resolution before you tonight actually comes at the request of the board, proceeding by somewhat disturbing, frankly, a presentation regarding the governor's budget proposal as it specifically pertained to statewide school facilities. So I appreciate the board's interest in bringing the resolution forward. I think it's obviously a critical component to what we do, both here in Elk Grove Unified School District, but the state as a whole with regard to providing adequate school facilities. So just as a preface, I did share with the board at the January 20th meeting a detailed presentation on the governor's so-called proposal around school facilities. As you heard that night, it was more or less a dialogue of the concerns with the current state school facility program, and it suggested a number of options that would push the obligation to provide local school facilities completely on the local school districts, and in some cases even use your local control funding formula revenues to meet your need for school facilities. As we know, that's simply out of the question and puts a competing interest from the classroom to the facility and puts us in a very awkward position, one that school districts have not been in since Proposition 13 was passed in 1978. In the end, the proposal suggested that it open a dialogue on school facilities, and I think the governor has gotten that dialogue. And so, in the wake of that proposal, you know that a group, Californians for Quality Schools, filed a ballot initiative with the California Attorney General's Office to pit a statewide school bond on the November 2016 ballot, and that's being processed by the Attorney General now, but we're excited by that. I think it speaks volumes about the public and the community in general around school facilities and the importance. To my knowledge, there's never been any such ballot initiative specific to school financing whatsoever, but certainly not with regard to school facilities. So it clearly speaks to the dire need that we're in. So I've shared with the board, as it stands today, there's $2 billion of backlog for projects that have requested funding from the state, where there is not enough funding for those projects, including some of ours. That backlog is going to continue to grow. Roughly $20 billion of projects have already been identified in addition to that backlog. As I mentioned, the state has always been a nexus for at least 50% of the funding, the rest of that being at the local level. So I've spoken to the coalition that's been established. There's a gentleman that will speak tonight, I believe. He is also part of that coalition, as are we, as members of the Coalition for Adequate School Housing. So I'm pleased tonight to have partners from the building industry who have committed to partnering with us and in turn us with them as we move forward in this important endeavor to get a ballot measure, frankly. So in addition to that, there's two members of the legislature who have recently introduced bills for statewide school bonds. At the moment, we don't feel like those, we're encouraged by those bills, so I don't want to be negative about that, but we don't feel that they fit the need as it's currently been presented. One of them's only for $1 billion, and one of them also speaks to reducing routine restricted maintenance to help us fund school facilities. So we have some work to do on those two pieces of legislation. So I think tonight really marks the beginning of an important partnership with the development community and also an important step in the right direction to hopefully seeing a statewide ballot initiative. You are certainly aware that we're in the process of updating our facilities master plan. I will be rolling that out to the board alongside Mr. Hoffman in the coming months. The need in that facilities master plan is a growth component, which we're all pretty aware of, right? Forty new elementary schools, seven new middle schools, seven new middle schools. The timing is what's in question there, but that's well over $1.5 billion of just pure growth need. In addition, the master plan is going to address a condition assessment, so kind of modernization, if you will, and rehabilitation of our facilities. We're still wrapping that up, but it's targeting a number right now of about a half a billion dollars, so $500 million, just with regard to need of our existing facilities that we have in our inventory today. So with that, I would encourage your adoption of the resolution before you tonight, and as always, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We do have two speakers here submitting blue cards. First, I'd like to call up Mr. John Costa with the North State Building Industry Association.
Can I lower this a little bit? Good evening, Board President, Board members. My name is John Costa. I'm here on behalf of the North State Building Industry Association. We represent home builders and land developers in 20 counties in Northern California. And we're here today to encourage you to move forward with this resolution. It's important not just to, at the state level, but here locally, to provide not just great schools for education, but safe schools for our students. I'm also here as a parent. My son currently is in first grade at Arnold Adriani, and hopefully next year, my daughter will be there in kindergarten. It's a fantastic school. We chose to buy our home in this district because of the school. I commute every day to work just so my kids can go to that school. And I also say, they offer great programs, after-school programs for children, one in which my son participates in, and he loves it. Something I would have never imagined from a school, and that's because of the work you guys do here. So I'm here again in support of this resolution, not just seeking the state bond, but even locally looking at ways that we can partner. locally looking at ways that we can partner together to build good quality schools for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Next, we have Brian Cooley. Familiar faces this evening.
Raises up after John. Board President Singh Allen, Board members, Superintendent Hoffman. Also want to offer congratulations to your new board member, Mrs. Charis. Good to see you back in public service. And Brian Cooley, I own Cooley and Associates. I'm a land development consultant representing interest in the Elk Grove Southeast policy area and out in the Sunrise Douglas area in Rancho Cordova. Also a former 12-year Sacramento County Board of Education member as well, and so I understand your job's a little on that side of the dice. Also here in support of the resolution. Our industry is very well aware of the importance of new schools and new communities and as Mr. Costa just talked about, a lot of parents, a lot of buyers make their decisions on that new school and how soon it's going to be opened and a pathway for their kids to go from K to 12. And Elk Grove's had a long tradition of excellence here in the region and so we do support your resolution. Lastly, you know, school finance over the last 30 years has been a byproduct in this area of really a three-legged stool, which is developer fees, your local Melrose and state, state funding. And what we've seen over the last six years is really a lack of that state funding being present and it's really held back, not just this district, but districts all around California in trying to plan for the future. And although our economy's been stagnant, we, we obviously, I don't need to tell you, haven't been selling as many houses we had in the past and we're still in a, in a recovery mode. At some point, that, that spigot is going to turn back on and we're going to see a lot of new home buyers back in the market and our districts are going to need to keep up with that demand of, of homes and to build schools. And so we applaud you and your efforts here to move forward and encourage the legislature and the governor to put a ballot, a measure on, on the ballot in 2016. So we, again, as an industry, we look forward to partnering with you for your local needs here and also at the state level. And again, we applaud your leadership and taking forward with this action this evening. So we're here to answer any questions. And again, our industry has been working closely with your facility staff and working out great efforts to make sure that with the limited dollars that are available, we can still meet the demands of, of new housing communities as they come along. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. All right, I will open it, open it up to board comments or questions from Mr. Pierce or stakeholders.
Madam President, I actually have a suggestion. So I'm, I'm in support of the resolution. I had a suggestion for an addition. I couldn't help but notice that facilities are a key part of our strategic goals in the LCAP. So I thought we might add a whereas to talk about that. Specifically, I'm looking at goal number four pertaining to wellness. All students have an equal opportunity to learn in a culturally responsive, physically and emotionally safe environment. And of course, facilities are a critical part of that. So I wanted to suggest that we maybe strengthen our, our resolution language by referring to that.
Okay, when we get time for the motion, if you would be so kind to make the motion with your additional language.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, well, just a couple of comments. I want to applaud you, Mr. Pierce, in taking a leadership role as well as our developer friends here with us this evening. I, she was disappointed in seeing the lack of attention for school facilities as part of the budget from the governor, as well as the lack of leadership, quite honestly, from California School Boards Association. And that's a continuing dialogue that I will have as a delegate Assembly member with CSBA. So I'm very encouraged with, with your leadership role in moving this forward because as you, as we are all well aware, is not only do we need to plan for the growth for our district, but also address the, the very vast inequality that we have with our current infrastructure. The best contrast you can see is walk, take a tour of Elk Grove High School and then go to Kasumnas Oaks. And you'll see just within a couple of hours what, what a difference it is. So thank you again for what you're doing, very, very important work. So at this mo, point, I would like to call for a motion. I'll ask Ms. Charis to read her additional language.
Sure.
But I would like to call on a motion to adopt Resolution 38, 2014-15, supporting placing a new school bond on the 2016 ballot.
I will move that resolution with the amendment that we add a whereas, something to the effect that facilities are critical to the district's ability to implement its strategic goal pertaining to wellness.
Perfect, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pierce, and thank you, John and Brian. All right, next, I would like to call upon Ms. Tina Penna for the Recognition of School Counseling Week.
Thank you and good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. Tonight, I ask the Board of Education to approve Resolution Number 39 proclaiming this week, February 2nd through 6th, as National Counseling Week. This resolution provides the board with an opportunity to acknowledge our school counselors for their tremendous impact on helping students achieve academic success and plan for their futures. In addressing such areas as student achievement, college and career planning, and crisis response, school counselors play a critical role in early intervention and prevention through counseling and guidance programs that provide direct services to students and their families. Tonight, I would ask the board to allow me to bring Ralph Robles, who is our district head counselor, forward. He would like to read a statement on behalf of our school counselors, many of whom are in the room this evening. Mr. Robles.
Welcome, Mr. Robles.
President of the board, Madam Singh Allen, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Heine. As part of the National Counselor Week, we would like to take a moment and thank the board for recognizing the work that counselors do in making sure that federal, state, and district mandates are carried out at the schools at the direction of the principals by the counselors. We look forward to continued work with all of our families and students in ensuring that they receive the best possible services in the areas of academic guidance, college and career preparation, and, and social personal, excuse me, social personal development. We are excited to be involved in ensuring that all of our parents and students are fully engaged in Common Core, Link Learning, and LCAP initiatives. The board's commitment and support to maintaining guidance counselors in our schools has resulted in a variety of accomplishments for our students and our district. The counseling staff of Elk Grove Unified School District is excited and committed to the new changes and opportunities available to our students, school, staff, and parents, also our surrounding community. We thank you once again for your continued support and look forward to working together.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like the counselors who are present to stand, please, and be recognized as I ask the board to approve Resolution 39, designating this as National School Counselor Week.
There they are. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 39, 2014-15, proclaiming February 2nd through the 6th as National Counseling Week.
And move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Penna.
Well, after that test of my technological skills, that I failed. Good evening, President Singh Allen and members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. I appreciate the opportunity to have a, a conversation with you this evening and I wouldn't necessarily call this an LCAP update, although as recently as yesterday, I had the pleasure along with Superintendent Hoffman of, of being with his superintendent's Student Advisory Group where we were discussing the LCAP and getting their feedback on, on their thinking regarding our four strategic goals. So that work continues as we're gathering feedback and input from our constituents and it will continue over the next several months. But what I just wanted to do today is the, it's been said by board members on the dais here, and the, the approach with LCFF and LCAP is of, obviously LCFF is the money and the LCAP are the programs and services. And when we were under a categorical model, those monies came to us and they were prescriptive in nature in terms of how they could be used. So with increased local control, in theory and hopefully in practice, we have greater individual decision-making and discretion over how those monies can be used, which can then leverage programs and services to drive the budget versus a budget that drives programs and services. And in all honesty, it can be viewed kind of as a chicken and an egg because we could, we could develop programs and services that in no way could be met by our budgetary reality. However, it is critical that we are approaching this with what do we need to ensure that our students have the best programs and services? And then how do we best leverage our budget to provide as many of those services as we possibly can? And the good news for Elk Grove is that Elk Grove for years has been a district that has approached things very thoughtfully and systematically. And just take a moment to remind folks, and I appreciate the board, five minutes ago referencing a portion of E4 and our strategic goal as it relates to the item that Mr. Pierce was talking about. So it is valuable that we see the connections and the relevance of, of the moving parts. One of the ways that when we have conversations about E4 is that as a, we can take it for granted that we're an educational organization and thus our job is to educate children, but it's important to ask ourselves as individuals and as an organization, do we truly know and do we truly understand and live a learning vision? And we have a learning vision and that's every student learning in every classroom and every subject every day. If that's happening, we're hitting a home run every single day. That's what we should be doing. And everything we do, every move we make, every decision, every expenditure should be how is it supporting that learning vision? And one of the questions several years ago when this was being designed and being considered and talked about and planned, the questions, some of the basic questions were what is our learning vision? And then the other is with the demands that we have as an educational organization, are we, within the context of our supply of resources, do they exceed demand or does demand exceed supply? And clearly, demand exceeds supply in terms of money and resources. And I'm not standing up here and complaining about it. That's the reality. So within that context, if we were swimming in money and resources and had more than we needed, we could frankly be pretty lousy decision makers because we'd have more than we needed. But we can't. We can't be lousy decision makers. We have to be extremely targeted and extremely focused in what we do so that we make every decision the right decision, so that we're doing the right things at the right time and we're accountable for what we do. So we leverage every single dollar. But the other thing about E4, and I'll talk about it within the context of people, is that oftentimes, there's been research that's been done where they've talked to people in the organization and they've asked them a simple question. Are you being used to 100% of your capacity? And oftentimes, the answer, even in organizations where people feel like I'm overwhelmed and I'm overworked, they don't feel like they're being used to their utmost capacity. And that's because the organization isn't necessarily operating within a systems model and I would say that's part of what this does. Because E4, what it does is these four components, we refer to them as foundation elements. Those are the four pedals. And I'm not going to go through each and every one. And surrounding those are support systems. And so in terms of high-quality instruction and the assessment of students and programs and wellness, looking at both adults and children in terms of mental and physical health and well-being and engaging our parents and community, we have an entire support system and all of those pieces, we have to know what they are and how healthy are they? And so in doing that, what that's enabled us to do is it's enabled us to generate strategic goals. And those strategic goals then are aligned with our educational system. There's many, many components to a school district and a school system. And they can operate as a well-structured solar system. Why I'm using a astronomy metaphor, I don't know. Or we could be spinning randomly about and we're not. We're very thoughtful in terms of what we do and how we do it. And it's this piece, and I realize for folks in the audience that there, you, you can't read that, and I realize it, but there's copies that can be available for folks. And I just want to touch on this for just a moment and then conclude. Because as we're examining the budget and as you as a board and we as a district collectively and collaboratively, we'll develop a budget so that we remain fiscally solvent for not just a year, but for three years and beyond. We also want to make sure that we understand the work that we're doing and how things align. And this, we attempted to do that on a single piece of paper. And we said if we can do all the things we're doing and show it graphically on a single piece of paper, then our system should be fairly strong and fairly understandable. So on that right-hand, on the far left-hand side, those are the eight state priorities that are mandated through the LCAP. Conditions of learning and pupil outcomes and engagement, and there's eight of those. And we've been gathering data and approaching those things for years. But what we did is we took our four strategic goals and again, we color-coded these. So what it is, is we took a look and we said, within this strategic goal, which of these eight straight, eight state priorities are addressed? Because what this does is, for example, even our own internal auditing system, we could sit and we could say, we're spending our money in this way or these, these different, for these different programs and services. And thus, we are making sure that we're addressing all eight straight, eight state priorities. An additional step that we took was to identify objectives. As when you teach a class, you have, we have our standards, we have our objectives, we have our goals and objectives. So the first one is we're talking about the implementation of the Common Core. We're talking, the second one is talking about expanding learning opportunities for students before school, after school, within the context of the school day, making our schools elementary, middle, and high as comprehensive as they possibly can be. The third is increasing intervention opportunities for kids within the school day, heavily connected to our PBIS initiatives, the initiatives at our elementary, our five-school elementary counseling programs and things of this nature. Expand and enhance access to technology for students and staff. Expand link learning and career academic, career academic pathways. That's getting at the ultimate outcome of ensuring that our kids are college and career-ready. Creating comprehensive student and programmatic evaluation programs and strategies. Enhance social, emotional learning for students, again, a component of wellness. And then lastly, increase parent involvement. So as a board, this is a tool that you and we all can use when we're making budgetary decisions. If there's something on the table being considered, we can look at this and say, how is it supporting the eight state priorities? How does it align with our strategic goals and which objectives is, is it, is it addressing? So I just wanted to share that with you this evening, just to give you an example of our ongoing planning. And this is exactly how we plan with regard to implementation of the Common Core, PBIS, major initiatives across the district. This is in hand at all times to guide our thinking and our planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarudi. I will open it up for questions and comments from my colleagues. All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for your update. Next, we have budget update, none, so we're on to public comment. I do have two blue cards here. I will call upon Mr. Brad Strong.
Good evening, President.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the Board, Superintendent Huffman. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to read from this, so pardon that, but I want to make sure I get through it. My name is Brad Strong. I don't attend many, many meetings, but I usually try to watch them online, and I've been involved in numerous capacities, including past bond campaigns, school site councils, and served as Chair and on the school district's Finance Committee. I've been troubled by discipline practices for some time now and decided to provide public comment. I have two outstanding students, never been in trouble, both well over 4.0 GPAs combined. They've only missed 13 or 14 days of school in, I think, almost 24 years. They've missed 13 or 14 days of school. Nevertheless, I've watched and struggled through the years over disciplinary practices and behavior remedies that I've seen in the various, in various schools. Last night, as they were assembling counselor appreciation goodie bags that they were taking to school, I couldn't help but think that for every five to 10 students that are suspended each day, and believe me, there are hundreds, but for every five to 10, you could provide that you could actually afford another counselor. Or, you know, there's another 10 good reason or good priorities that you could use that, those dollars for and the ADA that you're losing from the five or 10 students that are suspended each, for every five or 10 that's suspended each day. As I monitored the LCAP development, read articles, watched the last Board meetings, I've been absolutely thrilled with the focus on the PBIS and the district's PBIS initiative. I'm absolutely thrilled by the foundational groundwork in PBIS and by the investments and attention that you are giving to real interventions and real supports. That is extremely important, and that's foundational. That said, I'm not sure that I'm seeing the associated emphasis on positive discipline and restorative justice practices and the things that often accompany PBIS. Recognition of implementation takes time. I'm not hearing the words that make me think that eliminating out-of-class and out-of-school discipline practices are also a major part of that initiative. And that's why I want to make sure that that's not being missed, is you really have this opportunity. My experience, from what I've seen in the district, OCS, which is on-campus suspension, seems like knee-jerk reaction to everything, to virtually everything that's modestly non-compliant in school, in the schools that my daughters have attended. And when it comes to out-of-school suspensions, I, on more than one occasion, I've been left scratching my head, hearing about a five-day suspension where I know the parties, I know the infraction, and I've thought, really? Five days? I literally have questioned whether some of, sometimes a five-day suspension is used as a, where they're not losing ADA because they're putting them in a, in a, independent study for five days? Because you can, you can do an independent study for five days, but you can't do them for three, and that maybe this is some alternative mechanism to trying to save ADA. It's just, it baffles me why some of the, what should be maybe two or three-day suspensions, I go, okay.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
We're over the limit.
Over my limit?
Yes.
No consideration?
No, thank you.
If you can provide a copy of your statement, I would certainly like to, I'm interested in what you have to say, but we are trying to adhere to the three-minute policy.
Sure.
So, but I think you bring up some excellent points. I would love if you wouldn't mind sharing a copy that we can then share with the rest of the Board if you would provide a copy to Ms. Hein.
Happy to do so. I will come back at the next one.
Yes, please.
Where I really wanted to go, which was some disparaging comments that were made by the Board at the last meeting, and I will be happy to bring those up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have Susan Mason.
Good evening. Tonight, I just wanted to follow up on, thank, I think it was Ms. Pina that helped me find the questions and comments to the Parent and Community Night last February 26th and March 26th, and, no, it wasn't?
It was Ms. Tranel.
Ms. Tranel, okay, thanks. I found them. I went through each of the questions and responses, and I had just a couple of comments then. Apparently, it was announced at that meeting that questions provided that were not related to the content of the presentation are not being addressed, including those which are outside the control of the district. One of the questions that wasn't addressed, why are classroom sizes so big? I think that is within the district preview. How well is, are all the teaching staff prepared? That's a question I think should have been answered. Why are kids penalized when they use traditional math? Do they miss the entire problem? And anyway, that was just some questions I had on that version. On the April 23rd, 2014, the same message was presented, and my question, are private schools in California required to use Common Core state standards? Answering that, I know would have provided that the, the reason that you do have, that the school district did have a choice in whether to adopt the standards, and they chose to adopt the standards. So, anyway, I had a comment about Mr. Sarudi last, or back in January, mentioning Linda Darling-Hammond, and her name clicked in my head, so I had to go back in my notes and figure out why the group that's opposed to Common Core does not respect her. And one of the, what I found was that she was one of the founders of the charter school with Stanford Department of Education, and the Stanford, I think it was called Stanford New School in East Palo Alto in 2001, and it failed. The charter was not renewed by the state because they did so poorly under the theories, her educational theories that were put into practice. So that doesn't speak well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. All right, bargaining units. Any bargaining unit wish to address the Board? I'm seeing no's. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us up to Bullying Prevention Report. Mr. Sarudi, you are back on.
To demonstrate that I learned from my errors, Gail, who is with Tech Services, is actually going to get the PowerPoint started. And again, thank you, President Singh Allen and members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Hein. We're very appreciative of the opportunity to share valuable information about our bullying prevention and intervention initiatives and programs and services that we have in the district. I would say right at the outset that we fully realize we have 62,000 students in the district, and at any point in time, any one of those students, they're making decisions, both good and bad. We feel that we have an extremely comprehensive approach to our bullying intervention and prevention strategies, but we will never be satisfied with what we are doing. We fully realize that we can always do better and we can always do more. So with that, I'm pleased to be joined by Tammy and Gail this evening. Tammy with Student Support and Health Services and Gail with Technology Services. And what we'll be doing this evening is I'll just, as do as we always do, is ground the work in E4, talk just very briefly about PBIS. I was just here a couple of weeks ago and did that. But I do want to point out that the context and the framework that PBIS offers, because it is heavily steeped and focused on a variety of things, including bullying prevention and intervention. And in fact, PBIS literally has a significant, a specific component that is addressing bullying and anti-bullying. Then Tammy is going to touch on our, some of our specialized programs, and then Gail, who is leading our Digital Citizenship Initiative, will provide for you what we're doing in terms of cyberbullying. And so, again, just in terms of, of our bullying prevention and intervention initiative, it certainly is centered in wellness, but there's specific curriculum, and so it integrates with our high-quality curriculum and instruction. There's strong database and data analysis, and we'll touch on that in just a little bit. And we heavily involve and engage our parents and our community in this. And then a variety of support systems, from our technology infrastructure to our systems of communication, fidelity of implementation in terms of program design, some of our programs, we make sure that we're adhering to specific programmatic designs so we can measure the effectiveness of those programs. So again, E4 is guiding our work in our wellness, or our bullying prevention and intervention initiative. I just point this out because wellness, we're defining wellness as healthy bodies and healthy minds contribute to academic performance, attendance, and positive behavior. And it's more than just the orange bubble. There are actually those components: health education, health services, physical ed, nutritional services, counseling, psychological, and social services, healthy school environment, the healthy promotion for staff, and then our family and community involvement. And our initiatives that bullying prevention and intervention initiatives live within health education, there's specific curriculum, health services. Tammy is with Student Support and Health Services and our staff and our programs that are embedded within that department. The counseling, psychological, and social services, our staff and our programs are obviously heavily involved in and directly involved with students and families and bullying prevention and intervention. The healthy school environment, that is where PBIS, that's exactly what it is focused on. And then our family and community involvement. So again, I just wanted to show you the structure by which these programs are functioning. Our Board policy that was adopted in 2012, our Director of Student Support and Health Services, Mr. Carl Steinhour, was at the core of that work, can work directly with the Board, and our Board policy includes language that was directly included and edited and suggested by the Board. So our Board members were directly involved with the writing and the language in that policy. And I just want to point out that it includes language and defines bullying behavior. It includes both, the language, it addresses both person-to-person, face-to-face bullying-type behavior as well as cyberbullying, focuses on prevention and intervention, includes an emphasis on the importance of reporting incidents of bullying, and has a strong emphasis on ongoing awareness for students and parents as well as professional development for staff and administration. It's a very, very comprehensive policy. So just a couple of things to note regarding the support and ongoing support for that policy. In 2012, what began is all of our administrators are trained and informed, not just informed, but we have actual legal counsel that comes and works with our administrators in terms of their responsibilities and obligations related to bullying. Ongoing training and updates for administrators, we do it every year. In June of 2013, Wayne Sakamoto came and worked with both elementary and secondary administrators and solutions to bullying. We also have the notification of nondiscrimination. It's posted, so we're compliant in all of our schools. And a metric that's worth noting in the last five years, we haven't had a single incident of bullying, a uniform complaint that's come to the district level. They've all been able to be resolved at the site level, and that's ultimately what we're attempting to do. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is eliminate the incidents in general, but those incidents haven't arisen to a district level. In terms of PBIS, just a few brief comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tammy. So in, in the simplest context and at the most basic context, bullying is, it's a harmful and unacceptable behavior. That's what bullying is, it's behavior. And PBIS, at its foundation, addresses behavior. All of our bullying prevention and intervention programs and services are interwoven, interwoven into our PBIS program, and there was a recent article in the Journal of Applied Behavior Analysis. It was entitled "Bullying Prevention and Positive Behavior Support," and it referenced a 2008 meta-analysis where it was examining 16 anti-bullying programs. And what it found is that not a single one of those well-known and renowned programs showed any statistically significant change in observed behavior. So then that could leave the person scratching their head and going, so these are well-renowned, respected programs, and apparently they don't work. They don't work in isolation. That's the key. They work when they're integrated with a larger systems approach, and that's exactly what we're doing. We have PBIS, a district-wide initiative, and we have a variety of programs that are taking place that intersect and interweave and support these programs, and that's exactly what you're going to hear from Tammy in just a minute, and that expands also into the cyber world. And so I just want to point out, these programs can be very successful as long as they're supported and integrated into a broader context, and that's exactly how we're doing it. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy, and she's going to walk you through some of the very specific and exciting programs that we have. Tammy?
Good evening, President Singh Allen, Board members, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Hein. I'm going to try my best to capture a whole host of activities and projects that are going on at all of our schools in a very short amount of time. It would help if I use them. There we go. So Sacramento County Bullying Prevention Project has provided funding to our district for the last four years. In the first two years of the grant, we provided three demonstration schools, Roy Herberger, Union House, and Raymond Case Elementary Schools, training and in-service so that they could implement Second Step and Steps to Respect programs, Second Step in grades kindergarten through third, and Steps to Respect in fourth through sixth grade. So those schools received curriculum for all of their teachers, as well as a lot of intensive training and technical support from our team so that they could get those programs off the ground on their campuses. Since then, we have been able to leverage those resources and provide Second Step to all of our transitional kindergarten classrooms. And just to give you a little information about that program, it provides a fundamental knowledge for our students in emotion management, so they look at controlling their anger and their impulse-control behaviors, giving them decision-making skills and problem-solving skills. So when we provide this at the TK level, we're giving those students some really good foundational knowledge and skills and practice opportunities. So when they move into kindergarten through sixth grade, they're ready for some of that stuff that goes on in elementary school. The bullying prevention funding has also supported the training, as Mark mentioned, from Wayne Sakamoto for our administrators, psychologists, counselors, and so on. One of the exciting projects that we've been able to partner with an organization called A Touch of Understanding, and they do disability awareness training in elementary schools. And they bring in, it's all volunteer, nonprofit organization, they bring in adult and youth volunteers who live with a variety of disabilities. They roll in 30, 40 wheelchairs and canes. They have a setup to show students what it's like when you are living with a prosthetic device. They also have increased their emphasis on teaching students empathy skills for other students who deal with autism. And so the students get to sit in wheelchairs and try and see what it's like to navigate their campus. They're blindfolded, they get a cane, they get to see what it's like to have to go from point A to point B. And the whole emphasis is on building empathy so that if they are hopefully less inclined to tease or taunt or bully someone who has a disability. We've also provided this training right here in this boardroom for our staff a couple of years ago as well. We have youth mental health first aid occurring at our continuation high schools. This is a training, eight hours of training for teams, staff at each of our continuation high schools so that they can better intervene and identify students who are dealing with mental health issues. It gives those staff teams step-by-step process in how to intervene, where to go to next, and it also helps them understand based on their individual role. So if I'm a teacher, I might do this. If I'm a counselor, I have these resources available to me. Or if I'm the yard duty, and I've got a really good relationship with this student, but I'm noticing some behavior changes, I'm concerned, this is what I know to do next to intervene with that student. We are also leveraging that opportunity, and four of our staff in the district are being this week going through the training of trainers for youth mental health first aid so that in the future, they'll be available to train more of our schools in the district. As a broader note for that project, I've received a lot of training, as have other staff, and I'm always available to our schools to come in and do parent outreach and parent education, and I have a number of resources in my office that I lend out to schools all the time, simple stuff like storybooks that teachers can use in the classroom, up to and including training and curriculum. One of the events that I'm most proud of every year is our middle school leadership conference. This year's theme, Take a Stand, Unlock Your Potential. We are in our 14th year as a school district in hosting this conference. We have over 500 middle school students representing all nine of our middle schools come to that event every year. One of the neatest parts about this event, I believe, is that students from our area high schools plan it, they develop and design the workshops that will be presented, and about 80 of the workshops that are there over the course of the day are facilitated by high school students from Elk Grove High, Sheldon High, and Pleasant Grove High School. So they picked the theme this year. Our colors are purple, if that's your favorite color. The workshops will focus on relevant The workshops will focus on relevant topics, including bullying, harassment, self-esteem, stress, and drug use. We also bring in adult presenters to cover some additional topic areas that we feel are really important. It's an incredible event, you're all invited to join us at Antioch Progressive Baptist Church on March 5. Project GROW, I'm going to do my best to represent Project GROW, I'm not the program manager for this, but Paul Tuber is here if you had any questions. Our district was fortunate enough to be funded by the, for a federal elementary and secondary school counseling grant. This grant is in its second year of three-year funding. It provides services at five of our Title I school improvement campuses, Kennedy, Linebacke, MAC, Morse, and Union House. Project GROW stands for Getting Ready for Our World, and it utilizes a three-tiered public mental health model, and it's designed to positively impact the learning environment with long-term sustainable change. As you can see there, the Tier One, it involves all students participating in PBIS. From there, students who are identified as needing extra support go into what they call GROW groups, and they use the Second Step curriculum through their GROW groups as well. And lastly, you have Tier Three services, which is counseling services for families and students who need more support, provided by local community partners. In the first year of the grant, which technically was only half of the year, they provided Tier Two services to 167 students on those campuses, and 66 students were referred for Tier Three. This year to date, they've provided, 173 students have received Tier Two services, and 60 students have been referred for Tier Three services. As part of this project, 24 teachers have also participated in the Johns Hopkins Military Child Initiative, which provides curriculum and additional supports for our students who have parents who are active in the military. There are a number of site-based prevention efforts going on around bullying prevention. Some of the student presenters featured some of those activities already today. I can't possibly capture them all, but I will say the National Bullying Prevention Month campaign, which is in October, many of our schools participated in that campaign this year. Some examples at our elementary schools are Watch Dogs, Dads of Great Students, which is a father involvement program, so that our dads are out on the playground, they're in the classroom, they're getting dirty with paint and glue, and they're tutoring and mentoring. It's a great program, it's at my daughter's school, still working on my husband. Peace Signs is a theater program provided by Kaiser Permanente, and they've been in a number of our elementary schools. And it's an amazing theater project, and they focus on bullying and violence prevention. And of course, many of our elementary schools have character education programs and bullying prevention activities that they design and develop on their own. Our secondary schools have peer counseling and conflict management programs, they're conducting teen unity assemblies, unity days, challenge days, peer education and peer outreach. And just this year, as an example, a student from Sheldon High School approached me for support because she wanted to start an anti-bullying club at Sheldon, and it gave her a lot of information and resources so she could get that off the ground. So a lot of our students are taking the initiative to do something on their campus on their own and work with their peers. Parent outreach is one of the most critical pieces of this. We have our, through the parent engagement funding that's available to our schools, they have parent university, back-to-school nights and back-to-school events, our Bring Your Parent to School Days, and then of course, they utilize school loops, school websites, and our PTSAs and PTSOs to get the word out to our parents about the bullying prevention efforts that are going on. So those are just a few of the examples that are happening. I'm going to hand it over to Gail to talk about our cyberbullying and digital citizenship efforts.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, and board members, and Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. So our, the Elk Grove Digital Citizenship Program, the heart and soul of it is cyberbullying. And we've been piecing together this program since 2007. And that's back, remember MySpace? A lot of media hysteria over stranger danger and online predators. And while we still address the need to keep our students safe from others, we have also bumped it up and added, we need to keep our students safe from each other and from themselves. So we draw, you know, we pieced together this program from some amazing resources. So to, for example, for data and legislation on cyberbullying, our favorite is the Cyberbullying Center, Research Center. For outstanding curriculum to send out to our sites, we draw from Common Sense Media. Powerful videos for teaching empathy and kindness, we really like Net Smarts. Also, all three of these organizations have amazing parent toolkits as part of their offerings, online offerings. So about a year ago, we decided, well, we've got to put this together into a website so that there's one place that parents and students and teachers and administrators can go, and you can access our digital citizenship website. You'll see the logo right on the front page of the district website. And again, the heart and soul is cyberbullying, but we actually have four themes that are essential skills to learn and thrive in the 21st century. So in addition to the cyberbullying, we emphasize making sure our students know how to build and maintain a positive digital footprint, that they respect intellectual property, and that they understand how to protect their online privacy. You can maybe make out from the screenshot there that we have dropdown menus for educators with resources, we have dropdown menu for parents. On the parent's site, for instance, you'll find a breakdown of Social Media 101, just to give parents basics of how students are using social media for good and for ill. We provide curriculum to the school sites through an elementary and a secondary wiki, and we break it out by grade level, so every grade level has curriculum that includes cyberbullying lessons. We also have built-in an accountability measure. So in the fall, every school site submits a digital citizenship implementation plan that will include cyberbullying, how that site plans to address issues at their school. And in May, every principal signs a verification form stating that digital citizenship has been taught at his or her school site. Outreach, it's not just technology services that are providing trainings and resources. Our school sites are also organizing events. You heard students from Sheldon talk about their upcoming cyberbullying event that's happening. A lot of parent university and PTA meetings going on, often reaching out to outside presenters such as FBI. But what we have seen with bullying and cyberbullying, it's when students step up and challenge, this is when we see change start to happen. So let me just give you some examples, and this is just but a very small sampling of many instances of where our students have confronted, are confronting cyberbullying. Down at the bottom from two years ago, #UnfollowBullying, that was a student-initiated, student-led campaign that actually won an international award, Best Educational Hashtag. The Upstanders Not Bystanders, that is a global microphone to speak out on the difference one person can make when they have the courage to cross that line from bystander to upstander and change the culture of a playground or even the world. And if you go to that, Upstanders Not Bystanders Voice, you'll hear Elk Grove, we have Elk Grove students from kindergarten through 12th grade who've shared stories on ongoing conversation. The photo in the middle is Jackman Middle School, and that is a spillover last year. Students at Valley High School felt the need to take #UnfollowBullying a step further, and they created an initiative at Valley High School called Unbuliable, #Unbuliable, in which they went out, they rolled it out at Valley High School, but they mentored their feeder elementary and middle schools. No Place for Hate, No Place for Hate is a national initiative. Do you know that there's a seventh grader at Harriet Eddy Middle School, and he's brought this initiative to their site? He's created an after-school club, No Place for Hate, and he's partnering with the Anti-Defamation League. And the purpose of this initiative, No Place for Hate, is to empower all students with strategies for confronting all forms of bullying. So we have a lot going on, but again, cyberbullying, that's one of the fastest-moving targets there is. So as Mark said, we are never done.
Thank you, Gail. And just one final comment, kind of to summarize, and that's, again, the approach that we're taking to this, it's crucial because what we're doing is we're making sure there's direct curriculum and direct instruction to kids so that they understand what's appropriate and what's not appropriate behavior. We talk about strategies, intervention, prevention and intervention strategies, but a crucial piece of this, as a former teacher and a former principal, when you're working with kids, and you're working with a student who may be having difficulties, and you're trying to get information, very frequently what those students think is that, and the same thing can happen when they're coming home to mom and dad, if I tell you it's going to get worse. And what we're doing is we work extremely hard to create school environments where the kids feel safe bringing these matters to the appropriate people, whether it's something that's happening to them or whether they've observed something happening to someone else. If the schools aren't places where the kids can feel safe and they can trust the adults that they're going to, none of these efforts will be successful, and that's why the comprehensive approach that we're taking is so vitally important in the work. There's no single piece of this, but that is the power of a school-wide and district-wide initiative where we're developing a culture where it is unacceptable, but it's also understood that if help is needed, that it can be found and done so in a secure and safe manner. And with that, we'll take any questions or comments.
All right, thank you for that excellent presentation. I will open it up for board comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Madison.
Yeah, I had one. How did you, on the middle schools, you had 600 leaderships? How did you select 600 kids?
The sites select the students that they feel are most appropriate to attend. From a budgetary standpoint, we can afford one bus per school, and that's also our facility limitations as well. But we encourage them to look at their peer counselors, their peer leaders, students in peer helping roles. And then I also encourage the administrators and the counselors who are doing that selection process to consider having some students that are maybe on the fence, who being a part of this event would help move them on the right side of the fence and get them involved in leadership, so they're making some more positive choices. But it is ultimately a site-based decision who they bring.
Well, at the end, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
Some of the ones on the fence there.
More words than needed, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Fortina. He wore it for me, I was so happy.
He's representing, that's good.
Thank you. You know, we've had this subject around, and it just pleases me that we have the quality of staff that we have that has been able to put together the initiative. You know, this is an issue that goes back longer than I am old, and I can remember back in elementary school, middle school, high school, seeing how different children were treated. And I've seen that on my grandchildren's campuses today. I've had colleagues contact me, I have been pleased that our senior staff has been able to assist in interventions that have assisted the student and the parent. When we have bullying situations where students are sick every day because of the bullying, where they don't want to go to school, where they quit learning, it calls for drastic action, and I'm really pleased that the people at the school sites do step up and do that. So the effort's been remarkable. Just two points. One point, I think, and it applies to other areas, but it certainly applies to this area, is the consistency issue in the application of the initiatives. I know you are aware about the importance of consistencies, we've talked about it before with PBIS, it's just one, it's one thing we can never lose sight of. The second thing, and I know you do work on it, really is the environmental component, which is the big component. We can do all sorts of things, every day, and we do them. Bottom line, parent responsibility for instilling respect of self and others and the acceptance of differences. And try as we may, and we are very successful in those efforts, we can't ignore the fact that children who are experiencing difficulties go home to those environments that aren't as supportive as they need to be. So those are the two pieces that, for me, I know that we focus on, will continue to focus on, and one day, it'd be nice not to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortina. I believe Ms. Albiani had a comment.
Thank you for the presentation. There are parts I have never seen, so I enjoy learning more about what we're doing. I think it's very important and exciting that you're starting at the TK level, because I believe it is setting a standard that we will carry through. While we're always trying to be improved, I think we are trying to raise very responsible citizens, and that's a key component. And I believe giving children verbiage to use and an ability to practice using that verbiage is the key, because it becomes natural how to react in a positive fashion or a fashion that shuts somebody down. So I think those are valuable skills that I hope every school chooses to pull some piece and use.
Thank you, Ms. Albiani. Any other board members? Yes, Ms. Titus Espinoza.
One comment, thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. I appreciate seeing what a multi-pronged approach the district is using, and not to be the tough one, but since Mr. Sarudi brought up the issue of wonderful esteemed programs with a lack of data, I'm just curious if we have any data showing the effectiveness of our own bullying prevention efforts.
So the short answer is yes. And so individual programs certainly have individual measures. So for example, I appreciate Mr. Tuber being here, Paul, who's one of our psychologists, and he's at the head of the, and has been instrumental in running the elementary, the program, our elementary guidance program at our five elementary schools, and has been doing that kind of work for a while. And they're generating all sorts of data in terms of looking at the data specific to students so that we can certainly provide the appropriate programs and services, but also so that we're evaluating program. One of the things we did with PBIS is we actually went all the way to the level of significantly modifying and updating our SysWeb system, our student information system. So what we're able to do is, we actually track, if there's been an incident of bullying, we actually track it for the person who initiated the bullying behavior, and we don't refer to the students who are the recipients of that as victims, we refer to them as targets. And there's a reason for that, we don't want those kids to be viewed as victims, and we're working with that. But we track both of those for up to two years after the incident, so that we're making sure we're working with the student to provide, to provide both students support they need. In addition to that, the PBIS update, our discipline screen update, a lot of this work originated actually, and Bill is back there, I'm going to maybe off on my ears, Mr. Tollstrip, myself, and Mr. Craig, Doug Craig, the principal of Laguna Creek High School, five or six years ago now, maybe it's about five years ago now, went to a conference in San Francisco that was put on by the U.S. Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights, and it was specific to exclusionary discipline and looking at disproportionality in terms of students that are excluded from class. And that's where a lot of this work actually began, and us looking at this holistically and looking at the gathering of data. I appreciated the gentleman who came and spoke this evening, and in terms of exclusionary discipline, because folks have been looking statewide at what we have been doing because of the dramatic decreases in exclusionary discipline in terms of suspensions and expulsions in our district. And that comes from, for a variety of reasons, but a comprehensive approach that's grounded in data. We're now able through SysWeb, for example, to be able, sites are able to track incidents in terms of type of incident, specific students, teachers that may have been involved, locations, times, so that they're much better able to begin to diagnose where might problems be occurring, how can we get at them proactively. So our data tracking system is profoundly updated, and it's being utilized across the district. Our PBIS coaches, for example, are generating data reports for school sites, so they're going out and working with the site teams and looking at trends and looking at specific incidents with individual students or school-wide issues so that we can get at them in a proactive manner.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues?
I just had a comment, again, I'd like to thank you for the report that you gave for myself. The article that was attached was very informative as well, because it gave the prevention signs for cyberbullying, and as a parent, I think that's really informative to know. So I was just wondering, when you talk about the school site programs, is this form of education being taken apart as well and implemented with the parents so that way they can tell some early warning signs for their students if they are getting bullied? some early warning signs for their students if they are getting bullied?
Specific to cyberbullying or in jet spec? Sure.
You know, the, there's not a scripted, we are required, through our E-Rate funding, we are required to be addressing cyberbullying, but there's not a scripted curriculum. So sites can roll it out as best works for the culture of that site. But for instance, a number of sites with Common Sense Media in their primary grades, the students take home packets that they complete with their parents at home to talk about cyberbullying. And it, you know, it changes, the programs shift, and the resources shift as they go up in grade level. By the time you get to high school, for instance, some sites address cyberbullying within ninth grade health, and because they had addressed bullying there in their middle school, a lot of it's done in advocacy, advisory. We have a lot of sites now, high schools, though, students are now starting to put together e-portfolios, which is a wonderful chance for them to actually put their digital citizenship skills to practice as they begin to curate and really give some thought to what they've posted and what's good and what's not so good.
Mr. Prez.
Just one comment again. Just like my fellow board members, excellent report. I learned a lot reading the articles, and just recently I seen a good 108, again, Channel 108 legislative hearing on bullying, which was very informative on the legislative level and also programs within the state of California, throughout the state of California. So I maybe possibly have that link or maybe that video on 108, maybe a link on our bullying site. Like you're saying, healthy bodies and healthy minds contribute to academic performance, attendance, and positive behavior. And that's what I've seen in my 28 years of experience working, and working with my children at Anna Kirchgater, Kerr, and Florin High School. As a father of 28-year-old Down syndrome, who was in full inclusion at Anna Kirchgater, I didn't see any problems with his fellow students. There was very well behaved fellow students in helping them attend school, encouraging them in the classroom, and helping them, and throughout the whole his academic career. Also, how is full inclusion students' programs, have they even updated since then? Or what type of things are we doing with students on mainstream campuses, like?
So what are we doing with students in general regarding the anti-bullying?
Right.
Well, I would, again, point to the programs and services that both Tammy and Gail referenced. It's ongoing, and the one piece that I want to point out is that our sites, literally, for example, with our cyberbullying curriculum, they submit that to the district all the way to the point of where principals are signing off that it's been implemented. So it's very, very, our principals get training every single year, so they understand the legal significance and just the fact that it's the right thing to do. And so with the expansion of our PBIS programs and all the specialized programs, there's many, many, many programs that we're doing. And so if the board was curious about a specific school site, we can certainly provide that for you, as well as further information as needed.
Last question. Do and have board members participated in training of middle schools?
In what?
In the middle school leadership conference.
I have. I've been there for the last few years and plan to go to that.
Excellent. I would like to volunteer also. Thank you.
I have a number of questions and comments, and I will start off with the full recognition. First of all, outstanding work, thorough presentation. I think it was very enlightening for all of us to see the depth that we do go through to create a positive environment, a learning environment for our students and keeping our students safe. And I'll start off recognizing we also have 62,000 students, and things do and will happen. So I'm coming from a place that we can always do better, and I'm wearing my parent hat right now. As a mom of a child who was bullied at a high-performing school, it does happen. And so what I'm interested in is, as a parent, so my question is, as a parent, if my child is bullied, what can I do? Do we have a checklist that's streamlined? I know we have great programs at all of our sites, but if you're a parent, it can be very overwhelming. I'm thinking of a very simple checklist. I know we have parents here that brought me aware of some things that are occurring with their own children. So what I'm interested in is really just sort of streamlining the process, that every school has a checklist for a parent, for a student, not a victim but a target, and I appreciate the more appropriate label for that. But do we have something that we can use that's available, not necessarily even on the website, but also at our schools? What do we have available right now?
And so, a great question, and I just pulled this up, and I realized people aren't necessarily going to be able to read that either. That's the PBIS bullying-specific information. And so when our schools are going through PBIS training, one of the things they need to do, and there was the question about fidelity of implementation of programs. So there are certain criteria that our schools need to meet in order to satisfy that they've met the first level of tier-one service before we provide tier-two training. And a portion of that is our coaches are going out, and they're looking at what are the forms you have, what's the outreach you have, what's the communications you have, what are your internal systems of if a teacher needs to make a referral, students making referrals? We don't necessarily, and I'm not saying, you know, you've given me something to think about. Do we standardize it district-wide? Part of the reason we do what we do is because our school sites have their own internal processes. What we're looking for is, do you have these five, seven, or 10 specific processes and communications in place? And before we move them to tier-two service, that's what our coaches are doing, are going out and making sure that those are in place. So one of the things that I would say, and I've jotted it down, is, and when we meet, there's a district implementation leadership team that has a variety of people. From within our district, there's community representatives on it. If the board was interested in having a representative on that team, be more than happy to have a board member. It meets twice, or two Mondays a month from 8:30 to about 10:30 in the morning, but we'll certainly jot down kind of standardization of that. But I can share with you, and that's what I pulled up, because these are the resources that they're using, and we do literally have a checklist that our folks are using to determine whether or not they've met the standards of tier-one and can move to tier-two programming.
Great. So that's great for the parent. Now, the student, yes, please.
And also, for cyberbullying, we do have a parent checklist, and we have it in a number of forums and locations, but be happy to make that more readily findable.
So the feedback that I often hear from parents is, they're lost. What do I do? And so I think just as a, you know, as a parent, where all of this is already overwhelming when this is going on with your child. And unless you have access to those resources or know about those, it's very daunting and intimidating. So if we can streamline that to make it easier for them, I think it would be very much appreciated from the parent. Now, also, the flip side for the student. What do we have that's streamlined so that if you are a target of bullying and we've made it a very comfortable environment for them, how are we receiving that information? How are we communicating that outside of the assemblies that may happen once a year? Because I think what's very important is a consistent, ongoing message that is repeated often. Just letting them know about it when they come from day one to school is not enough. You know, we talked about not having a supportive environment at home. I know situations, including my own home, a very supportive environment where the message was repeated often, but what was missing is the discussion on being an upstandard, not a bystander. I think that message is very critical. And so, again, it's that repetition. It's ongoing. But what do we have for the actual student in place that's streamlined and it's easy and it's not daunting and overwhelming?
Gail, you want to touch on cyberbullying first?
With the cyberbullying programs. And again, typically at the elementary, it's been computer resource teachers leading the charge, but now more classroom teachers co-teaching on this. Middle school, a little more the, during advocacy, so it's a combination. The same in high schools, our librarians pitch in. But, you know, for the, and the, you know, the bottom-line message that we try and get across to the students, find an ally, or, and find a trusted adult. And that trusted adult may not be you, the parent, because for a lot of our students with the cyberbullying, their biggest fear is that you're going to take the cell phone away. And, I mean, you can have that conversation too. If you're not comfortable talking to me, you know, is there a teacher, is, you know, is there a sibling, is there a neighbor, is there somebody that you are comfortable to talking to? So, you know, finding a trusted adult or among their peer groups, find an ally. And, you know, letting kids know on the upstandard, not bystander, they can cross the line. I mean, what we hope for is, you know, they cross the line in the moment, from bystander to upstandard. But also, they can do it after the fact and be an ally, and just go to that student and say, "That wasn't cool, which just happened to you, and I'm sorry." Even though it wasn't appropriate, or they couldn't stand up to the bully.
Right. Because often the bystander is in fear of getting bullied themselves and having that redirected to them. In my son's situation, it happened for over two months. Supportive environment, readily accessible information, all the time, but it wasn't, and it wasn't a fear of losing a cellphone, getting in trouble, getting somebody else in trouble. So that message, again, it's not just coming from home, but it's that repetition that really needs to be reinforced often. Now, I did attend those, the leadership conferences, which I think are wonderful and student-led, and I always want to hear from students. What do we need to do as board members and in the district to help solve this issue? What can we do proactively? All of them, all of them, when I had the dialogue with them, that it does need to start at the elementary level, because those behaviors are learned and taken with them in middle school and high school. Not to say that, you know, those isolated incidents don't happen, and those on their own, but if we are teaching compassion and kindness and respect for one another, that really needs to start early. And again, I'll go back to that often, not just a single assembly where we bring everyone together to meet a goal, that we did it. If we actually do it, we need to do it right, and we need to have that consistency.
And that's at the core of PBIS programming. And so when you're going to the schools, and again, I'll, as you put your parent's hat back on, or put your parent hat on, and as a principal, it does go back to, it's not a matter of having a, and I'm not hearing you say this, and I'm in complete agreement with what you're saying. It's not a matter of having checklists that kids need to be aware of. It has, it has everything to do with, just as it's an environment, if you're, it's happening to you electronically or it's happening to you in person, you need to know that there's someone that I can go to.
Right.
And that's it. In a nutshell, that's what it is. And every single student on every single one of our campuses has to feel that, and that's at the core of PBIS programming and supported by all these initiatives. So can we do enough? You can never do enough, but it can't be messaged just at the assembly that, at a high school, at the assembly that you have when you do grade-level assemblies. And that's not what PBIS is about. It's every adult, every day, reinforcing the right thing to do and getting support if needed, every day.
Right. And I appreciate that, and it goes back to, we do have 62,000 students, and I fully recognize that, that things do and will happen. So do we track, I know that we track the incidents from the bully side. Are we collecting data and monitoring and tracking the target, not the victim but the target?
Yes, and for up to two years after a documented incident that we're aware of. Yes.
Okay, very good. And then my last comment is on cyberbullying. I think that we do an excellent job. That is one area, I, you know, I've actually attended a number of workshops on this. That's one of those areas I think we can definitely enhance and do more. I think parents really don't have an idea of how powerful it can be, the impact of social media. It's instant, and hundreds and potentially thousands are engaged instantaneously. And so I know that we do do an excellent job, but I think it's one of those areas with our back-to-school nights and all of those other various opportunities, and also making those available in other languages. Because, you know, if we're really going to try to infiltrate and really make a difference, we need to make sure that we're crossing all cultures as well.
The resources I share, the Center for Cyberbullying, the Common Sense Media, and the Net Sports, they're, all of their programs, resources are available in Spanish at this point, and we look forward to them being available in more instances.
Great.
You know, we recognize how pervasive, persistent, and destructive cyberbullying is, but, you know, if anything good has come of it, it brought back to the table the conversation of bullying.
Right, yes.
And that it's not a rite of passage. It's not okay. And it's because of the cyberbullying, I think, that more of these conversations are on the table now.
I would agree with you, and I think it's, there was also a misperception out there that it doesn't happen at our high-performing schools. It is not the case. It happens anywhere. So again, I want to thank you. I, you know, I'm very proud of the work that our district does, and I want to thank our superintendent for putting this on the agenda, because I think it was a very important discussion for all of us here to understand not only all of the good work that we do do, but what are some areas that we can improve upon, so that we can always trying to do better and reaching sort of for those higher goals. So thank you again for that thorough, thorough presentation.
Madam Chair, may I chime in on one of your points? Absolutely.
Just very quickly, thank you very much. Excellent points. What I really heard you saying underscores the importance of assessing our programs, not just by input, sort of a checklist of, oh, we completed X-assembly, but really focusing on outcomes, which, you know, they're definitely doing with SysWeb, but outcomes such as, what is the effect? Does a student, does a parent know immediately how to access these resources? So just wanted to add that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you again. All right. Next, public hearing action items. We have none. Discussion items, we have Mr. Pierce. Discussion of the request to sell unused vacant land at the Meawak Village Elementary School Site to the City of Elk Grove for Gilliam Trail Project. Is it Gilliam or Gilliam? All right. Thank you.
Thank you again, President Bobby Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. I know Mr. Mate hates when I use this, but I'm going to have to use the doc cam to share some information with you tonight. This is with regards to the Meawak Village Elementary School Site that we currently own. It's in the East Franklin area. And I'll give you a quick history here, but the City of Elk Grove is in the process of finalizing its development, and I apologize for the lighting here, its development of the Gilliam Trail Project. This is obviously a well-developed park. You can see just here to the north, the existing trail, and that trail is to continue along a creek there to the north, adjacent to our school site that we, as I mentioned, already own. So in the process of the city developing this trail, they have come across the fact that they do own a 30-foot-wide parcel to continue that trail. However, in the development of the actual creek, the Franklin Creek, they have realized that that 30-foot parcel actually falls within a portion of the creek, and they need additional area to complete the trail. So they have asked the school district if they could come on to our property anywhere from six to 12 feet to continue that trail system. This school has already been designed, and we have worked with our architect firm to see if, in fact, we can accommodate that additional area that the city needs so they can complete the trail. So what's happened is because of the school being completely designed, approved by the State Architects Office, so on and so forth, we've asked the architect to look at that, and we can actually accommodate up to eight feet, so the city can complete the trail. That will require some redesign on our part, so that we kind of move some things around to accommodate the trail. And that does come at a cost, quite frankly, and that's in your board documents tonight. The city has agreed to pay us for the portion of the property at its value, so we valued that property based on what we purchased it for. And so in your document tonight, you can see that the city has agreed to pay us just south of $17,000 for the value of that property. So we are actually asking to proceed in this fashion so that the trail can be completed. It's an important component of that community, and it will also help children and parents get to our school site when it's ultimately developed. So this is not coming before you for action tonight. It will come back as a public hearing and an action item. It will come back as a public hearing and an action item. But I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any questions or comments from the board?
Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Perez.
How much, how much is it going to cost the city for putting up the fence?
So, we don't know exactly how much they're going to spend on the fence. What I would tell you, though, is that the cost of the fence is probably going to be more, at least in our estimation, than what we're spending on the redesign of the school. So, that's a swap, obviously, for the school district. It's a benefit to us that they would construct the fence in lieu of us ultimately building the perimeter fence on our part when we, when we develop the school.
Were we going to put a fence up there also?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, all of our school sites have a perimeter fence around them.
Right.
So when we develop the project, we, we would in turn be building the same chain-link fence that they're going to be now installing on our behalf, the length of the property.
So, someplace, somebody has the cost of that fence in our plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. Since they are requesting to buy our land, I feel personally that they should also pay the $20,000 for the cost of the amendment or the plan revision, personally, because it's costing us $20,000 as a district, and we're doing them a favor, but yet it's costing us.
Right.
Right. Did you discuss that issue?
So really, what's happening, Mr. Perez, in that regard? Rather than them paying our vendor, which is the architect firm, we will be paying them for the redesign fees, they will be constructing the fence, and that's the rub there. So they'll be putting up the fence that we would otherwise be building.
So...
In lieu of us paying for the redesign fees, and they will be buying the property. So, from staff's perspective, we think that it's a fair deal and it's a little cleaner that way.
Okay.
But I appreciate your concern, which is why we went at it the way...
That's why I asked for the cost of the fence. If the fence costs more than $20,000, we're getting a really good deal, right?
Yeah, and they're definitely, give or take $1,000, it's in the exact ballpark of what the redesign fees will be.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I mean, it seems like it's going to be a wash, and again, it goes back to the community's best interest as well, in which we all share in that best interest.
Agreed.
For our shared, our shared community. So, well, we look forward to you bringing it back as an actioned item, public hearing.
Two weeks, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have no discussion items and action items, just wanting to remind everyone that Number 7 and Number 7A were already discussed earlier in the meeting. So now, we are on to board member and superintendent reports. Any board members have a report this evening?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Madison?
Today, I had a very long day, exhausting day, with the Public School Accountability Act, Advisory Committee that I attend, usually it's every other month, the California Department of Education. As I mentioned before, we're in the midst of trying to revise the API. We discussed, today was discussing the advantages and disadvantages of using a single index measure versus a multiple measures as we move forward, trying to set a new benchmark for our API. Also, the overview of the college and career indicators was discussed very heavily. I know this district's involved with the CTE programs, so I just want to bring everybody up to speed. The State Department, we're putting a lot of efforts into revision of this API. It's not going to be the same. I just want you to be really cognizant of that. Again, we met all day today, and it's going to go to the state board, I think, next month, what we proposed to them. I don't think that it'll take effect perhaps in 2016 right now, it's just so much work that's going into it, and not just looking at one given school, but to look at, what are we going to do for kids to make them all better? The old API system was, you did 800, you're supposed to be fantastic. What does that really mean? So, that's going by the wayside. So just, you'll hear more about it as we move down the road a little bit. And we talked about the, some of the budgets and the local control funding, and the eight priority, eight state priorities as relate to data elements. I don't know if Mrs., Mr. Sarudi has seen this yet, but I thought it was quite intriguing to see all the details behind the eight state priorities. So I'll pass this down and maybe make copies for all the board members as we move into our budgets and for this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Just a quick update for myself. I did attend the CSBA Board President's Workshop and Training. It was an all-day event. Very, very helpful, and a lot of takeaways and some wonderful information that I will send to Ms. Heine to make available to the rest of my colleagues, as I'm sure we will all see one of you here through the course of the year, so you can get a head start on your early reading. So that was wonderful. I think one of the wonderful takeaways from the workshop is, is a reminder that we all need to kind of focus on, and it was, it was one quote that really sunk in for me, that as we do our work and as we look at our agendas and build our agendas, that we always go back to focusing on our E4, of course, but it's a real simple message, and that is, the main thing is to keep the main thing, the main thing. And I thought in a very simple sentence, it makes complete sense, that the work that we do, we need to make sure that it reinforces our goals and what we're doing, our mission and our, and our goals and so forth. So, and particularly as it relates to LCAP and E4. But the main thing being primary, and I thought that just that little sentence was wonderful. You know, learned wonderful tips on how to run more effective board meetings, and I've had two meetings and I'm pretty, I think I'm doing okay with managing the clock, but it might be the lack of having too many items on the agenda. So, so I want to thank our district for allowing me to attend that. There are a number of trainings available for board members. I think it's excellent opportunity that we have right in our backyard to take advantage for professional development and continue to grow and do better services for our children. So, that's all I have. I do know that there are going to be various openings on committees that we will make available now that our team is complete with Ms. Chares Espinoza, that we will bring that to the board for the various opportunities for the board to engage on the, on the numerous committees that we do have. Yes, Mr. Madison?
I just, I just, if I can, Madam President, I had the opportunity to attend a craft fee, and it's kind of off a little bit, but it was at Carroll Elementary School, and it's probably one of the best craft fees I have attended.
[laughing]
I know, no, the PTO and the, and the teachers there just did an outstanding job. I've been to many craft fees, but that was just marvelous. I just, I just want to comment that to the staff out there, they did such a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Superintendent?
So I will say, we are working on the Friday communication regarding the board committees, and we'll have that information out to you very shortly, so we're working on that. I did want to welcome Ms. Chares Espinoza to the board. We are very happy to have you and to round out our team, and looking forward to working with you as we, we do the main thing. Won't do that taking care. I did notice many of you at the Map Your Future event, and just want to note that it was standing room only, wiggle room only, shoulder-to-shoulder room only. It was an amazing event, so I want to thank staff for all the work they did, and thank board for honoring the work and the kids and being there. So it was, it was a great, great event. Had the opportunity to work with a couple of local officials. Assemblyman Cooper actually got there yesterday and spent the morning with him, starting to establish that relationship with the, with the legislators, so I want to make sure you're aware of that. And also spent some time with Sacramento County District Attorney Anne Marie Schubert, who is both an official capacity and also a parent in the district. And we were able to actually talk through some issues and ideas she has from a parent perspective, and also some resources that she can bring to the district as well. So both very worthwhile conversations, so appreciated that. I did also want to do a shout-out to Principal Don Ross and his team as they're working through the TB issue that we're dealing with on the floor in high school. I know from personal experience, being in those type situations as a leader of a school site, that it's a challenging time and challenges your leadership. And also want to thank our team that has provided the support to Don and his staff, that will be working closely with county health to make sure we, we do the right thing and get that taken care of. So I want to make sure I noticed that as well.
Clarification? The, the information on the open committees that will be coming forth in the board communication, will they be such as, so they're providing information that'll then serve as the basis of discussion with respect to which committees individual board members may have interest in serving? Or are they coming by way of information, this is what you're going to be doing?
The thought process was I'd be working with President Singh Allen, and actually working a process where getting all the openings out to the entire board, and then having the board communicate to Ms. Singh Allen ones that they're particularly interested in, and then she can kind of balance to make, make the appointments in that fashion.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to the consent agenda. I'm going to call on Mr. Fortina for the consent.
Yes, I move approval of the consent agenda, which includes eight, approval of minutes, nine personal actions, 10, approval of purchase order history, 11, contract gratification, 12, acceptance of gifts, 13, disposal of obsolete surplus property, 14, Williams Act Quarterly Report Notification, and 15, revision to board policy, 5145.3, non-discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Thank you, Mr. Fortina. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
We have a motion?
I'll second, and just want to note that I'm abstaining from the approval of the minutes since I wasn't here last time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. On to Item 16. No, no item was removed from the agenda. Other items from the floor. Hearing none, items for future agendas. All right, hearing none. I call this meeting adjourned. Oh, Mr. Perez, is it the main thing?
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. It is the main thing. Well, we presently have a crisis. It's a health crisis, I believe. Our communities is of poverty where I represent, and not only is identified what's going on even at the Capitol, school districts throughout California are having the same issue, and that's health services within schools. We need, I would like to talk about the possibility of primary care clinics at, maybe are somewhere of our schools. There's model programs through, throughout California districts that they have school clinics. And so, maybe I'd like to have somebody within our health profession discuss that issue. What is possible? I witnessed within the last five days at Kaiser Hospital, people in our community breaking records of the misuse of emergency room services. So we need community clinics within our communities. It was terrible. It just so happened that my son has a very, what we call serious cough. We thought it was TB, we thought it was a flu. And so, you know, and witnessing the last five days over there, and you see kids from our schools down there, you see parents from our schools at Kaiser. And I talked to the administration there since I've been there, and yes, they thought that was a good idea, that we need to redirect some of these...
So, Mr. Perez, I'm, what is your ask?
That we need to have an issue talk about primary care services, clinics in our school setting, if that's possible.
All right, I will encourage you to sit down with our superintendent.
Okay.
And share your ideas. And if it's something that's within our, you know, our jurisdiction, if you will, and something that we can look at and discuss, but I suggest that you sit down with Mr. Hoffman and share your ideas.
If not that, we could partner with other providers that provide primary care services that are servicing our general area. This area, if you're, I'm not sure if you're aware of, we have areas within our district, they're identified as medically underserved areas, medically underserved populations. As a result of that, our ADA suffers, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, and I will call the meeting adjourned.